All right, the appointed hour has been arrived and recognized as the presence of the Forum. I'll call the committee with the side city council in order, ask you to join me in standing for the pleasure of meeting, please remain standing for the invitation to be left by Councilman.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please pray.
Dear Lord, we thank you for this day, we thank you for the blessings in our life, Lord, we thank you for the ability to come here and do the business for the City of Forsyth. Pray, Lord, that you watch over us tonight, that we make the best decisions for all the citizens of the city. Thank you for all your blessings, in your name we pray, amen.
Thank you, Senator, we all will come here to participate in the business of the City of Forsyth. The record reflect that all members of council are present in person while they proudly with the exception of Councilman Howard. All right, any first item on the agenda is approval of the agenda. I know there are going to be changes or corrections that need to be made, is there a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Motion by Councilman Hewitt, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Dodd, is there any discussion, additions, deletions, or corrections? Hearing none, I'll call the question, all in favor. Record reflect, motion carries unanimously, so approved. Next item on the agenda is approval of the minutes from April 5, 2021 council meeting. You should have been provided a copy of events electronically, is there a motion to approve those minutes? Motion by Councilman Goolsby, seconded by Councilman Hewitt, is there any discussion, additions, deletions, or corrections there too? Hearing none, I'll call the question, all in favor. Motion carries unanimously, those minutes are approved. Next item on the agenda is a public hearing to consider a conditional use application of Swin's Candies allowed city, city attorney.
As you said, this is a conditional use property dislocated in the industrial park, industrial park court for Swin's Candies, for manufacturing food processing in a manufacturing industrial zone properties, tax map 054009Z. It's been advertised in the November 24th or issues of March 31, April 7, and April 14. This went to planning zoning, at the March 22 planning zoning meeting, and I think we have a copy of those minutes to give to you tonight. And the planning is only recommended, recommendation was for approval. I'm afraid of a public hearing, council's acting.
All right, this time we're open to public hearing, public hearing is now open. We begin by hearing from Officer Officer Miss Pearson, you have anything to add on this matter?
Not going to repeat this stuff. Swin's Candy will be manufacturing candy, and they will also have a retail space at this location. There was not a lot of discussion about allowing the food processing, conditional use, because it is a manufacturing industry. I did tell the board that there will be a retail space, and there were future plans for expansion. Swin's Candy will be coming back to the designer review board with their site and architect plans for approval. Like Mr. Milton said, it was approved, four board members present, present revoting for Mr. Coleman abstaining.
All right, Ms. Pearson, are there any in the audience here tonight to speak in favor of the proposed conditional use application?
I don't want to speak, but I would like to raise my hand in favor of the application.
All right, are there any in the audience to speak against the proposed application? Any wishing to speak against? Are there any wishing to just speak on this matter? Sometimes you just got to get it off, you know, get off the chest. All right, recognizing no interest in participation in the public hearing portion of the thing, I'll ask again, anyone wishing to speak for, against, or otherwise on this matter, speak now or forever on your feet. All right, hearing no interest, I will close the floor for the public hearing, public hearing is now closed, and as a consideration of this council, any motion is in order at this time.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion, did we approve it?
Second.
Motion by Councilman Gooz, Goozby to approve the conditional use application, seconded by Councilman Dodd, is there any discussion of questions?
I think the only discussion, Ed, I think Eric's here, I can't really see from the glare.
Right here.
Eric, I think it's awesome that you're bringing a business from Milner, wherever it is, and to bring it here, and I know Eric, and I know him through another business that he has, but I think it's just a great addition to Forsyth, and a great use of that industrial park out there, even with the commercial piece or the retail piece, I think it's just an awesome addition. So thank you, Eric, for investing in this town and in this city.
Thank you.
I like the way you kept the architectural features of the whole building in place.
Trying to make it look old.
Did you happen to bring any free samples?
We'll get that to you later.
Surprise.
All right, any other discussion or questions? Hearing none, I'll call the question, all in favor of the motion? Motion carries unanimously, record reflect, that is all members of council, all in favor. All right, next item on the, congratulations, and we'll look forward to seeing what you're going to do.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is a public hearing to consider a rezoning and conditional use application of Western League, city attorney.
As you said, this is a, consider an ordinance to provide for amendment of zoning district, and zoning map for property identified as tax parcel 054005 at 495 Holiday Circle, I think it's just shy, one and a half acres. The request for rezoning, the property is already in the city, rezoning from multifamily residential to highway business, the conditional use approval to develop climate-controlled self-storage on the property. The advertisement for this had been run in the November 24th, you said, was March 31, April 7, and April 14. Planning zoning on March 22, at the planning zoning meeting, recommended is approval and she will have a public hearing and council action.
All right, go for the public hearing, public hearing on this matter is now open. We'll hear from Officer Officer Miss Pearson, do you have anything to add?
Let's see, I got to repeat a little bit, the parcel 054005J is on residential multifamily. The parcels on the north, south, and east side are residential multifamily. The parcel that is on the west side is highway business, the parcels that are across the street on Patrol Road are highway business. This property has been used as commercial property, and licensing has been for commercial property. I can only assume that at one time it was owned to residential multifamily when the Holiday Cove apartments were built. The rezoning conditional use represented the planning and zoning on March 22. There was not much discussion about the rezoning, rezoning the parcel for residential multifamily to highway business, because this parcel was discussed previously, and there were some questions about why it was residential multifamily, not highway business, because it's being used as a commercial piece of property. The board asked if any changes will be made to the exterior of the building, and there will, there will be no changes to the exterior, only interior remodeling. The board also asked if there would be a person working on site, and there is a possibility that someone will be managing the facility. As Mr. Milton said, the board proved, four board members present voting unanimously.
I think, Ms. Pearson, any in the audience tonight wishing to speak in favor of the proposed rezoning and conditional use application of Western League? All right, just a second, if you will. Anybody, anybody in opposition, wants to speak in opposition? Anybody, anybody that wants to speak out loud? All right, Mr. Mommy, you have it for me, yes, sir?
Okay. Mayor and council, good evening, thank you for, for hearing this tonight, I just want to, first of all, Georgia mommy, 106 Chase Lane, Forsyth, Georgia. I am representing the purchaser here tonight for this application, and the seller for the sale of the property, and basically, you know, just want to clarify that there's all the, any changes that are going to be done, will be done to the interior of the building. It will, it will be improved to, to have heating and air, air conditioning throughout the entire key of the building, and there will be, you know, it'll be a 24-hour access for, for climate control, control storage units. So I think that the, the impact, you know, to the community and the neighborhood surrounding should be pretty minimal. Most of the time, there, there's not a ton of traffic at one time, generally you'll have one or two people over there at a time, so, you know, as far as traffic, or trips per day, or, you know, nighttime lights, or, you know, anything that could be a nuisance, I don't, I don't expect there to be any kind of an issue there, but mostly just wanted to be able to answer any questions that you might have, that I can answer, you know, on behalf of either the seller or the, or the purchaser.
Is it, is this going to be a change in ownership, or just a change? It is?
It is. Upon, upon approval, there's a contract contingent upon zoning change, approval, yes, sir.
Any other questions for Mr. Mommy? All right. Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Anyone else wishing to speak in favor of? Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition to? Anyone wishing to speak? This will be the final opportunity. This matter is now, public hearing is now closed on this matter, as the council's consideration and the motion will be in order at this time.
May I? If you disagree with this.
I have a motion from Councilman Hewitt to approve, is there a second?
Second.
Now, the second from Councilman Dodd, is there any discussion, or are there any questions? Hearing none, I'll call the question, all in favor. Record reflect, motion carries unanimously, and rezoning, and conditional use application is approved. Next item on the agenda is approval of the application for a license for the sale of alcoholic beverage, Deepak Patel, at 291 Northeast Street. All right, city attorney.
All right, as you said, this is for a package store alcohol beverage sale license at 291 Northeast Street, tax parcel F25015. The application appears to be complete on its face, I don't have any questions about that. It's here for the council action.
All right, any motions?
Where are the objections to this?
Okay, are there any motions forthcoming from the council?
So moved.
A motion to approve by Councilman Goozby, seconded by Councilman Hewitt, is there any discussion, or are there any questions? All right, Councilman Howard? Yes, sir.
Did Bobby say that was a pack, a package store?
Yes, sir, it's a package store.
Exactly, 291, where, exactly where is that?
It's the new Valero station.
Oh, okay, so you're going to have an actual liquor store inside of it?
It'd be a separate entrance from the outside to the liquor store.
Okay, I mean, I don't have a problem with that, I just thought that, I honestly thought that we didn't have it more likely, that was my thing.
These will actually be the third, and we can have four.
Yeah, I know we can have four, but I, I, I just, I, I get with you on that, but I, I thought we didn't have it.
All right, any other discussion or questions?
The owner is here, the owner.
Yeah, and Mr. Patel is here, if anybody has any questions of him. All right, any other discussion or questions? Hearing none, I'll call the question, all in favor. Motion carries unanimously, it's all approved. All right, thank you. All right, the next item on the agenda is Schneider Electric presentation. And if y'all would, if you could stand over here when you're speaking, because we'll pick up better for the ones that are, that are.
Yeah, I thought you were not going to talk to me. Oh, this is for your, for the cleaner.
Good evening, Mayor, Councilmen, Ms. Hall, it's a pleasure to be with y'all, it's, it's been about two years in the works, and so we're excited to be here for y'all today, and really present kind of the first of hopefully many conversations about the stewardship program that Schneider Electric and City of Forsyth partner on together. So we've got a handful of slides here to go through, really just to start getting y'all acclimated to kind of what we've been working on, but ultimately, what we're calling for is down the road in a future meeting, a vote to enter into a design contract to really hone in on the exact scope and price of a solution geared around stewardship. Okay, so, a little bit of context before we get started, we began this process about in early 2019 with actually the Middle Georgia Clean Air Coalition, Mayor Wilson's, and most of those meetings, and what the Clean Air Coalition saw was that for their communities, a way to help offer the services that Schneider Electric provides to, to all their communities, right? And so we'd already started work with Robbins Air Force Base, Jones County, and Make 'Em Viv, about $35 million worth of scope that we've done between those three clients, and so they saw that as an opportunity to really bring it to more of the communities in the area. And then after that, with specifically the City of Forsyth, we, we first met with Janice and her staff in April 2019, and we received loads of operational and utility data to try to understand, you know, where the opportunities could lie for fiscal and operational stewardship. We brought a team of engineers on site to evaluate some opportunities and scope items, and then we presented about a 50-page report in November 2019 of what those opportunities could be. And through multiple discussions with, with Ms. Hall, we have kind of honed that down to what you see, what you're going to see tonight.
All right, hang on, the ones that are looking in can't see this, so I'll try it again.
All right, perfect, if I can get it back to the.
Can you get it in there? Full screen.
There we go. Perfect. So, really, what we like to do with every client, we've been in business over 30 years, we've done over 700 of these projects, but we always kind of like to start from the ground up and clarify a purpose statement of what are we really trying to accomplish together. So for the City of Forsyth, working with Ms. Hall, it's, it's to create a stewardship-focused digital solution that reduces expenses, streamlines operations, and bolsters citizens' service. So as an overview of how this program works, how we, how our model works, we have three key points. First, it's a comprehensive solution. Think of us almost as an architect and design-build firm for your existing infrastructure, and we want to come in and identify what's the best way to optimize those, both from an ongoing cost perspective, but also just the ease of maintenance and ability to, to serve your, the people in the facilities. Next is a big focus on fiscal stewardship, right? A lot of these things, they, they take up a lot of money, and you just, you don't notice it until, because it, it just grows over time, right? And so what we want to do is optimize those, that scope item, and quantify how much that savings can be, so that you can have a really clear picture of, of that return on investment, and also use those savings to pay for the very infrastructure itself. So for the case of City of Forsyth, we're looking at two specific buckets, both your water revenue from your metering infrastructure, and then other operational costs, right? This is your, your facilities team managing all the, the facilities across the city. What we're aiming to do is increase that water revenue while reducing the ongoing operational costs, and then again, you use that surplus to fund the project. This is all enabled by legislation in Georgia enacted about 11 years ago now, and like I said, it's been, it's been taken advantage of, we've had only over 15 contracts in Georgia over the last five-year period. And then finally, this program is designed to be one partner, Schneider Electric, and so we handle everything from the design, the implementation, and then the ongoing verification of these savings actually being achieved. Okay? Again, this is, this is enabled by Georgia Code 5037-1. So getting to the nitty-gritty of what, all this time we've spent evaluating City of Forsyth, working with Ms. Hall and her staff, these are really the clear items that we identified to go, to go address. Okay, so the first and main one is all around the water and electric metering infrastructure. So you've got a hodgepodge of, of infrastructure across the city, we've spent a lot of time with Mr. Craig Helms, understanding kind of where the opportunities are, and the main goal is replacing that, that infrastructure with updated, because what happens with specifically water meters, is it degrades over time, and it's not billing accurately. And so what we've estimated here is that y'all are losing about 5% of your water revenue that's just going through the meter and not being billed, and that accumulates, that accounts for about $130,000 per year. In addition, these water meters are updated technology, so you can see everything from a computer, and you get real-time data so that Craig and his team can respond to leak detection, they can respond to, you know, big spikes in usage, and provide more service. Also, when a citizen calls in and has a complaint or an issue, you have immediate access to all that data, and you can show that record of, of what's been, what's accumulated. Craig brought up the fact that, and y'all applying for GMA and FEMA grants, there's a lot of data requested, and that's not always readily available, and so having a system like this allows y'all to, like the, the big $30 million grant y'all are in the process of, to, to apply for that more readily. And finally, every city has limited resources of personnel, so obviously not having to pull a truck when you get a citizen complaint and go drive out and see the meter, you get all that in-house in front of a computer, creates a lot of efficiencies for the team. For one client that replaced about 1,000 meters more than y'all have, that resulted in $44,000 a year in, in just operations and maintenance savings alone. And then the beauty of our, our program is that you don't just focus on one sequel scope item, right? We look at it holistically, what other areas, and one thing that's come up with Ms. Hall is, is your telecom systems across the city. And so streamlining that technology, obviously you guys are, have had to adapt over the past year to use things, how do we do that across the city with other telecom infrastructure? And then finally, we, we've talked to Ms. Hall about a signature solar project, and really the increasing demand for, for innovation across the city. And so these seven buckets are really what is our starting point of what we've talked through and evaluated to, to pursue, but the, the next step would be to enter into an act, exact, a specific design contract, to actually go and build these out, and get you a full turnkey price to install all of these, and actually know, all right, what is that $130,000 savings actually going to be, or increased revenue going to be? So the rest of this presentation is just taking a snapshot of each of these seven, and going a little bit more detail. I'll breeze through the meters here, because we've, we've already kind of focused a lot of our, our time here, but again, I'll, I'll highlight that, that recapturing the lost revenue, I mean, that's really the driver of this project. The other things aren't going to create a lot of savings, and so you've got to have kind of that, that cornerstone of any project that's going to help fund the overall initiative. For Make 'Em Viv, this was their telecom, and having all their disparate phone systems across, we're able to save over a million dollars a year, streamlining that, using our buying power as a national firm to, to get more competitive rates and get it all cleaned up, so that they're able to use that to fund things like mechanical replacements, lighting upgrades, things of that nature. An example is a community in Texas that was about the same size as the City of Forsyth, we replaced just under 3,000 water meters, which is what y'all's number is, 3,000 meters, and we actually increased their revenue by 9%, or $262,000 a year. And I think the total turnkey price to, to install this project was around $2 million, so you can see about a 10-year payback to, to implement this type of solution. But then, a lot of the feedback from them has come from this bottom point of, you know, just commuting, creating that customer portal access to where they've got more clarity and understanding of, of where their water usage is at. Just going to pass off to my colleague here, Jen, to talk through some of these other items, and then we'll, we'll close out.
Yeah, so, you know, as we're looking at these projects, I think kind of consistently, every project is a puzzle, and it's about kind of figuring out what pieces are going to make that puzzle complete. So when we're looking at those key drivers, I mean, there's always the key infrastructure needs that cities are facing, and for y'all, I mean, what being, you know, having the water meters upgraded is a driver, but there are a lot of other areas that we look to provide value, so one of them you mentioned is the telecom, I mean, that really provides a big piece of the, not just technology, but the financial picture, we've seen that be a really big bucket of just extra dollars that can go fund other priority needs. Another area is solar, this is something that, you know, is talked about, and all sorts of alternative energy sources are looked at, and, you know, it's 2020, that's something that is a part of the conversation, but in a lot of communities we're looking at, it's not as much about providing a standalone, self-sufficing energy source, it's, hey, let's demonstrate to the community that we're innovative, and that we are making strides to, you know, be in the 21st century, and we've done, we're actually working on a project down in Gulf Shores, Alabama, right now, that we're actually doing several solar installations that we like to call it a signature solar installations. These are, it's in a school system, and they're giant flower-shaped rays that show the students, hey, these, you know, this is what solar can be, but it's not necessarily about powering that entire school. Another piece is street lighting, I think Trent touched on this a little bit, but we're actually working with the City of Covington, over east of Atlanta right now, to, we're in their design process, and with street lighting, for them, I don't know if y'all are familiar with Covington, but they're a big film area, they have a long history, Dukes of Hazzard was filmed there, all the way up to more recent Vampire Diaries, I, you guys all look like you watched Vampire Diaries, so.
Yeah, I'm a little bit wrong there.
But for them, it's all about downtown beautification, and kind of their downtown square is so key to their revenue with the city, so, you know, even being a utility provider, they see the value in, you know, uniformity in their lighting and the decreased maintenance. And these last two pieces are not as much about hard scope or technologies, but really areas we have found to be really important. The first is community awareness and promotion, we know that y'all are a service-oriented city, and making sure that citizens are aware of what projects help, they might impact them, especially when it comes to meters that affect them every single day, they really just wanting to communicate and be ahead of that message, and make sure that that is getting spread, and that we can work with, you know, whoever might be in charge of your communications, to kind of build out a full plan for that. And the last piece is funding, and, and we know that we can put together all the newest technologies and upgrades in the world, but if there's not a way to actually fund it, then there's, there's no project. And so typically, this conversation is around our in-house financial expert that works hand-in-hand as much as y'all would like, or need us to, to put together options for funding, but even more recently, that conversation has changed somewhat with all the federal funding packages that have come out, and looking forward to the future, expecting, we're pretty plugged in with kind of the developments, especially in energy infrastructure packages, and seeing more of that coming down the pipe from municipalities, conversation with a lot of cities we're working with is, how do we make sure we're ready with the project to be at the front of the line for those potential funding sources that might come? Because we're even seeing in the K-12 space where that funding is, is very much allocated towards kind of what we do. Lead times have already gone from what was typically a 12-week lead time to a 20-week lead time, and that's for projects that were already completely developed, so just kind of looking, we don't know exactly what those funding sources might be, but should that come and, you know, be focused in the energy infrastructure, that's something that, you know, y'all will be prepared to. you know, y'all will be prepared to come moving forward. So these were just some other examples of branding that we've done for clients' projects, both in Georgia and in other areas of the southeast. But that's always customized and worked with each city. Like I said, every project's a puzzle from the marketing, funding, scope, and we just want to work with y'all to get the right fit, so.
Yeah, I mean, a lot of times what we find is you spend all this money, you do all this hard work to get the infrastructure in place, and then no one ever hears about it. And so really taking advantage, that's why we call it a stewardship program, of trying to really show the community that you're being a good steward of your resources, both physically and physically. So just quickly, you know, kind of our differentiator, why we've had so much success in Georgia, you can see there in the bottom, that point of 15 contracts of the last five years, we made a conscious investment in Georgia. And really, our differentiators have been those two core values of integrity and excellence. As you can see, there's a lot of moving parts here, and having the background to really stand behind it and show, you know, how all these numbers come together, be really transparent throughout, that's just something that has been our kind of motto throughout our 30-year history. We're recently ranked as the number-one leader in this market for the third year in a row. And so we take a lot of pride in that, just doing the basics, the fundamentals really, really right. But again, I think you can kind of go through these, but at the end of the day, it's about that, like Jen said, it's a puzzle. And really working closely with your team to make sure it's fully aligned to the City of Forsyth's vision and just enabling that through stewardship. So as I mentioned, in a future meeting, the next step would be to vote, to enter into what we call an investment-grade audit. Again, this is all following the Georgia legislation. And that design process takes about four to six months. And that's where we're having, you know, a lot of meetings with Ms. Hall, with Craig Helms, and really getting down to the details and building out a full turnkey solution of, we're going to go do maybe five of those things that you saw, maybe two of those things that you saw. And then we will come back to you guys with a final price, a final estimated what that return will be, and both in the cost reduction and the recaptured savings that you would expect on a yearly basis. If the city elects to not move forward with any project at all, not, oh, you have to do the full, all seven things, if you do absolutely nothing, that's the only clause in our contract that we recoup some of our costs, and that's $42,350 if you decide to walk away. But you may say, hey, we're just going to do the water meters, and that fee is completely absorbed into the final project. So once we then design that, you vote to approve the construction contract, that final project, then we actually go and install all these solutions, just like, you know, y'all build the city hall, right? You get into the construction phase. And our initial pipeline estimates for a project your size is anywhere between $2 and $4 million, okay? And then finally, that complete construction, you complete the construction piece, and then we enter into that ongoing verification that those savings and that recaptured revenue is actually occurring, right? To kind of protect that investment, that's part of that Georgia legislation. And so we'll annually reconcile that when we come back and present that to you all to see, you know, that that, those numbers actually can be different. That's all we've got for today. Really appreciate y'all's time. We welcome any questions if y'all.
Thank you, guys. Any other questions? Anybody got any questions? Y'all did a great job.
Thank you. Yes, sir. We got a couple of these printed out, and so if y'all need a little take home, I know there's a lot to chew on.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, guys. All right, the next item on the agenda will be approval of legal services agreements for water and wastewater relating to USDA law.
These agreements are similar to what we did at the last meeting with the engineering. This will be for Bobby's local legal aspect of the water and the sewer. USDA does require that we have separate, for any of the agreements that have to do with the USDA, that we do have a separate agreement for water, and then we have a separate agreement for wastewater. The agreements that have been submitted are not to exceed a total of $60,000 for water and not to exceed $60,000 for the sewer. These are separate from bond counsel that we will need. This will be for additional work that Bobby will be doing early on and with the engineers getting the project set up. This will be reimbursable once the engineers have everything, have all of the specs drawn out, and we close on the USDA loan. And in the meeting when Carl Hofstadter and the USDA came, you remember that Carl said that it would probably be 18 to 24 months? I think USDA heard 18 months. So at that time, when that closes, then we will be reimbursed back for any of the expenses that we spent from then until today. So this is just approval of this agreement so that Bobby can do the work on the USDA water and the USDA wastewater project.
Motion by Counselor Gilley, seconded by Counselor Dodd. Any discussion or questions? Hearing none, all in favor. Motion carries unanimously, so approved. Next item on the agenda is approval of Pelicano Change Order Number 7.
I hope that you saw on Google Drive, I sent out some pictures showing you the initial rendering of the building, and then the rendering with the original custom-built desk that we wanted, and then the one that, I'll pass these around so y'all can look at them, the ones that are here, you can see those. Initially, when we were designing the building there in the hallway, in the main hallway, we knew that there would be a future need for a receptionist desk there. And when Clark Nixon did their first fly-through of the building, we realized very quickly that, and you will see from that first rendition, that as you walk into the building, there is no one seated there at that front door. You could have someone that could come in and truly not know where to go because of the way the offices are set up, the way the payment area is set up. Yes, we can have signs, but for this to truly be a welcoming, friendly, visitor-friendly building, we need to go ahead and put that reception desk there. That first rendering that you see with the desk with the slats on it, that was the low price they came in on, that was about $20,000. And then what we were doing at that time was matching the casework with the council chambers. When that came in at $20,000, we asked them to go back and look at something else. And so if you'll remember, as you walk into the front of the building, the council chambers, the inside wall will be the brick, the same as the outside, but then on the other side of the wall, on the second floor, is a panel. And so what we've done is matched that panel that is in that hallway, and the cost of that is $14,462.80. I know that that does sound expensive, but we did get the design group to look at purchasing a pre-made desk to go there, and a pre-made desk that would look and fit in there is about the same as that. With this, we would be able to match that exactly to the panels that are there in the hallway. The other part of the change order is just for paperwork purposes because the previous information that was submitted for Pelicano on their completion date had June, and so this change order will take it to make this extinct which you have previously approved. But I do ask and recommend that we do approve this. Initially, we would, that would be the place that Judy would be assigned so that she would be able to direct people through the building as they come in. And then, of course, initially, we're going to have people that are just going to want to come in and want to go around and visit, and so we'll have Judy there at that desk.
All right, is there a motion? Hold this change order.
Second.
Motion by Counselor Dodd, seconded by Counselor Hewitt, approve change order number 7. Any discussion or questions? Hearing none, all in favor. Motion carries unanimously, so approved. Next item on the agenda is approval of a street closure request of Sandra Butler on Saturday, May 8, 2021.
You have a copy in your packet of a request. This is for the area behind Person's Bank of Jackson Street. They're just asking to block off that area from 5:00 PM to 8:00 PM on Saturday, May 8th, for a musical celebration of the life and memory of Mistress Betty Freeman.
All right, is there a motion?
No.
Motion by Counselor Hewitt, is there a second? Second by Counselor Dodd. Any discussion or questions? Hearing none, all in favor. Motion carries unanimously, and the street closure is so approved. Next item on the agenda is approval of requisitions over $5,000, of which there are four listed. One for radar sign for $7,210. One to Hydro-Cal LLC for $14,258. One to Davis Plumbing for $16,185. And one to Georgia Hydrant Services Inc. for $7,500. Is there a motion to approve one or all of these invoices?
I might motion to approve them all.
Motion from Counselor Hewitt to approve them all.
Second.
Seconded by Counselor Dodd. Any discussion or questions related to any of these invoices?
Can you tell us what they're called?
The radar sign, the $7,210, that's actually for the two additional signs that I had asked you about if we could do that. I will just tell you, just for your information, a week ago, one of the signs that we had over on John Street was hit. It did not break the sign, but it did mess up the bracket. And so we're trying to, electric department thinks that they'll be able to fix that bracket. If not, we'll have to purchase another bracket to put that back up. So we are down the sign right now, but that is the $7,210 to purchase two additional solar signs. The $14,258 for Hydro-Cal is for the last two composite samplers that we need. EPD has written in their inspection report for several years that we were manually testing at the N-fluent and the F-fluent for the finished water from the wastewater treatment plant, that we were doing that manually, we were submitting those tests manually. And so this is actually mechanical testing for that. That's the last two of the composite samplers that we need. The one for Davis Plumbing and Georgia Hydrant, those go together. That's actually there at Valero. In order to serve their water to the new building, then we're going to have to run a water line up and connect to the water line that is there, close to the fire hydrant that is between Valero and Circle K, whatever the building is, it's right beside them. As the contractor got there and they started looking around the hydrant, if you looked at the requisition, you saw all of the information that Craig had there. So we've decided that rather than connecting and leaving the fire hydrant there that we know needs to be replaced, that we know is not secure, that this is to replace that. In order to safely replace that, and for the future, to have a valve to be able to cut that off, then we have to do the valve insertion. Of course, the valve insertions, they run about $1,000 an inch, and so this valve will be to insert in $7,500. But those go hand-in-hand. We've got to insert so that we can cut the water off, so that we do not have to cut everybody off from the railroad track down to I-75 to change out this water.
Thank you.
All right, there you have it. Have motion and second, any other discussion or questions? Hearing none, all the questions, all in favor. Motion carries unanimously, so approved. Next item on the agenda is City Manager for Paul.
I hope that you saw my short report, and it is included in your packet. I do just want to get just a couple of items. The Blunt Street CTVG water line, hopefully that contractor will be finished by the end of May with the service connections. The letter did go out to everyone that is in that area. One of the issues that we're running into is that part of this project did include the installation of service lines, even though that line belongs to the property owner. In changing out the water line, changing out the water meter, we also included changing out that service line which goes from the customer side of the meter to their plumbing connection. And so we want to make sure that all of the residents are aware of that. West Main Street Water Line Project, they are just about finished with that, and I believe everybody is on the new water lines. The Goff Course relocation overhead project, the overlap underground project, the relocation of that overhead, they were supposed to finish last week. I don't know if they finished the underground part of that or not. If not, they will get that finished this week as soon as they have that line energized. Then we start removing the old lines and taking down those old poles so we can redo the survey over there. The Land and Water Conservation Grant at the Goff Course, that work has been completed. They're still working to do, to get the reconductive project scheduled for the Meadow Drive Country Club area, and hopefully that will help with some of the outages that have been in that area due to trees and limbs. You will see an advertisement running for the environmental assessment for the Land and Water Conservation Grant for the Country Club Park area. We will have the letters going out in Annexation Phase 1. Those should go out by mid to late May. You'll see there in the report, there's a list of the products that are on the economic development side and their status. Just in the general report, we'll be installing a temporary rail there at West Johnston there at the Pickled Oak Grove. When we went up and looked at it, we figured out that just looking in the basement, there does not appear to be the kind of issues that we ran into when we did Streets Gate 1 and 2 with there being a void under the stairs. But we don't want to start construction now at Persia Festival time, summertime, when things are just opening back up. And so what we will do is install a temporary railing that will be comparable to the handrail that is there now, just be two horizontal bars until the fall, and then we'll be able to go back and put railing that will match, and then we'll take out the stairs there. You will see in my report that I have that we need to replace the majority of our pickup trucks. Our pickup trucks are old, and they are beginning to just be completely worn out. We thought that we had a temporary situation where we were going to take a truck off the road and use one of the old vans and get that truck back on the road. And Steve Butler said that that truck did not need to go back on the road. And so we have a temporary situation where the guys are riding in a van, and we need to get that changed. But we are working to get a list of vehicles that we need to replace, what vehicle they currently have and what we need to replace it with, because the public works need the full size so that they have, because they have at least three, not four on their crews. You'll see there, and you've probably heard from lots of citizens, about the waste management issues that they are having with personnel. Hopefully, you saw the email that I sent out that I forwarded to you from Steve Edwards with waste management. What they are having to do is literally pull drivers from a recycle route in another city to put him on a garbage truck, garbage route in another city. That's some of the reasons why they are missing some, because it's a different driver. We do not have a driver that is assigned to the City of Forsyth. I don't think they have anybody that is assigned to anybody right now because they are hurting so bad for employees. They did ask that we bear with them. One of the things that we have done is Regina's group has created a work order, and so as people call in and say, my garbage was missed, instead of us just either calling or sending an email, we are creating a work order and actually sending that work order to them so that we have an easy way to monitor those. Sent out an email about T-Splash. The county wants to put T-Splash on the ballot in November. We need to make sure that, one, do we want to participate? And two, if we do want to participate, what our projects will be. I believe the county is going to use their monies again to resurface roads in the county. The last time this was on the ballot, what we had as our project was to connect sidewalks on West Johnston Street and West Main Street, and then take the sidewalk out, Country Club Drive, out to the park. So if that's the same project, we do not need to make that decision tonight. That may be something that you want to think about, you may want to have some meetings. We're working to schedule a strategic planning meeting, and that may be something that you want to bring up then. I just want to make sure that that is in the forefront of your mind. I was contacted again today about a citizen requesting the waiver of penalties for those that are senior citizens. You'll remember that I brought to you at the last council meeting that we surveyed 10 other cities, and out of the 10, there was only one other one that provides any sort of a discount for their senior citizens, and then there was either two or three that for their senior citizens. And then there was either two or three that if they do have senior citizens, that, uh, they do wait that penalty. I did recommend to you that we wait and not make any changes because that is part of the ordinance, uh, that we wait and, and make any sort of a recommendation, any changes that we do at the time when we, uh, look at the rates because if there's any changes that we need to do at that time. Uh, Steve Coleman dropped off the hard copies of the cemetery lot for the, uh, new cemetery lots at Memorial Hills. So we have copies of that. The markers were received early last week and he said that he would get those installed. Uh, public hearings that are coming up, just so that you know, there will be an advertisement for the changes to the alcohol code. Uh, you probably received a copy of that in your email by now. Uh, once that, uh, once that runs, then we will bring that back for a public hearing. May the 3rd, you will have a public hearing for the annexation request of the 591 acres for, uh, FJH and timber assets. Swizz Candy will return with the building design to the Designer Review on April the 26th. Also on the 26th, Dontavious Troy Park has a request for a conditional use to go for, uh, planning and zoning. He's asking for, uh, to be able to use, to open a, um, barber shop and it's only conditional use. And Castleview Development Partners has a rezoning request that will also be going. The only other thing I have is that this Saturday is truck frenzy. It will be held from 11 to 3 in the Fine Arts Public, uh, Fine Arts Parking Lot. Right now, there are 10 vendors that are signed up. Uh, and this is the kickoff for the Persia Festival and then the Persia Festival will be May the 22nd, 23rd.
Any questions for Ms. Hall? All right, very good report. Moving along, city attorney report.
Hey, ma'am.
I'm sorry. Go ahead, Councilman.
I just want to ask, um, real quick. Um, Dan, I remember, I remember, frankly, you did say, uh, you weren't too happy with the way that, uh, there, um, you know, the cuts they made in the road over on Blunt Hill and whatnot. I just want to ask about that. I, I wrote out through this Saturday and, uh, I have to agree, it is horrible, the, the mess they made over there. I do realize they have to do some work, but I'm seriously hoping that they're not going to leave it like that because, I mean, they, you know, they, they need to, they need to repack the whole place before they cut. And then they cut across the whole driveways and, and I understand why people are upset. I did get a few phone calls, uh, earlier, you know, a, a few weeks ago about it. And I was just telling them, I said, well, they're supposed to put it back after the gas. But, I mean, if they're going to leave it like that, I can understand why anybody gets upset. But I'm hoping we are, you know, all are in account for that.
Uh, we had a very frank meeting with them, um, before those letters went out to the citizens. Um, and I expressed our displeasure about those road cuts. Uh, believe it or not, if you went Saturday, they were better on Saturday than they were before we had the meeting. Um, but they're still not, they're, they're, they're still not
So.
good road cuts. But that is not the final. He does understand that he has to put gravel, uh, six inches of concrete and two inches of asphalt is what we require, uh, on a road cut. Uh, and so he is, he will do that before he leaves the project. Now, um, he's not going to do that final on those road cuts until he, until he has all of the water connected. He does not have all of the water lines in and he doesn't have those service lines in. So he doesn't want to cover those up final, uh, until he knows that, that everything's working properly. Uh, but he did assure us that, that he was going to have people in and working and that, that they would get that done as quickly as possible. And, uh, I, I did not write through there today, but I did write through last week and, and he had made some improvements, but, uh, he's still got a lot of work to do.
Okay, yeah. All right, I appreciate it.
All right. Anything else for Ms. Hall? Now, we'll move on to the city attorney report.
Well, Ms. Hall set up all the things I believe that, that are coming up in the future. We advertised, they have the, uh, the alcohol beverage, uh, component. It's just to take that in reference to parks as a prohibition distant from, uh, an ABC license. It's only in parks of our city code. It's not in state law at all. This is to get that, uh, you know, more workable, uh, thing. And the other things that have been advertised and I think everybody's got a copy of public ordinances and can see the ads in the newspaper now. This is some questions.
All right. Thank you, sir. Any questions for the city attorney? Hearing none, we'll move on. I don't have anything to add. Uh, any additional business? Anything that we have not heretofore handled that we need to? All right. Are there any public comments? Anyone in the audience wishing to come forward? If they do so, please state your name and address and have up to four minutes to address the question. Anyone? All right, protecting no interest. We will move on. There is no need for an executive session. Uh, Officer Corbett, did you want to introduce the, the hire or?
Yeah, well, I think this is John Bob, he's actually just got hired because he's a pre-mandated candidate. So we've got him here for a couple of months and getting some initial training, preparing for mandate, exposure to the city and everything. Travel law from a ball to operational procedure a little bit. So, if you're not ready to see you all in action.
Welcome aboard.
Right ahead.
All right. Any other business that anybody is aware of? If not, there is a motion that is entirely in order.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Motion by Councilman Hewitt to adjourn. Is there a second? Second by Councilman Gilbey. All in favor? All right, and the record reflect this meeting is properly adjourned. I'll have a good night. Thank you.